Thank you, Dewayne. If everyone would check your mics and if you would, welcome to our board meeting, February the 5th, 9:00 a.m. If everyone would take a second or two and put your phones on silent, we would appreciate it very much so. As always, we'll open up in a word of prayer, followed by the pledge. We'll have a prayer by Pastor Brooks and a pledge by Will Sly. Everyone, please stand.
Pastor Brooks?
May we all bow. Gracious heavenly Father, we come before thee with a bowhead and armor heart. We first want to say thank you, Father, for this blessed day that thou hast made. And Father, then we ask that thou will be a part of these proceedings that take place here today. Let us all be on one accord and let us do all things decently and in order. We just thank you for your grace, your mercy, your love, and your son, Jesus the Christ. In Jesus' name we do ask, amen.
Will?
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank everyone for being here this morning. Mr. Ronnie Lott is absent today, as you can see. Mr. Daniel Clark, you're up.
Yes, Mr. President. You have before you several sets of minutes there, as you see, from January 16, 17, 18, 26, and February 1st. Having reviewed those, if they're all in order, I believe you can take those all in one motion, should you choose.
Okay. Do I have a motion for approval?
I would like to separate them out, just simply because I believe it was the, what, January 20? No, not the 26th, the 18th? Is that the correct one where I was absent?
Okay.
I would like to abstain from those.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve all of themself for the minutes of January 18th?
Who?
Got a motion from Supervisor Banks, second one Supervisor Griffin. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes of January 18th?
I'll make that motion.
Motion from Supervisor Banks to have a second.
Second.
Second Supervisor Griffin. Discussion?
Discussion. That meeting was originally called for us to sign Project Atlas papers, which were not ready for that meeting. And apparently it was deemed a proper place to put extracurricular things that should have been on this agenda today. One of those was a raise for the supervisors. I just wanted to go on the record that I would have voted no for a raise for the supervisors, considering we just had a vote for a raise three months ago. So I just wanted to go on record that my vote would have been no. And the fact that that meeting wasn't canceled when the special thing that it was actually set for and everything rescheduled to this meeting, honestly, it just shows that maybe we do not have the best leadership of this board, because that was just not proper. So I wanted that to go on the record as well. I'm done.
Okay. Are you saying you did not want the raise?
I will gladly not take the raise.
Okay.
There's no system in this world where $50 a pay period is going to change my life.
Okay.
I got some charities that you can donate them to, if you don't mind.
That would be just fine.
All right.
You let me know what they are and I'll hook it up.
Fairview Baptist Church is one.
All right. We have a motion on the table and have a second before we get into charity. Any other discussion? Thanks Supervisor Brandon. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We're going to change up the agenda just a little. I know that we have, at this point, before we get to the concerned citizens, we have a big project that has been announced for Madison County, been in the papers and been on the news for many years, I mean, many days and weeks. And we want to just kindly bring it back to Madison County, to where it originated, where it started from. And so I'm going to ask Joey Deason, Director of Makita, to come up and get us started. And I think we have several speakers here as well. So after that, maybe Mayor McGee, if you would like to come up after Joey, and then Haley, after him, then Phil, and then maybe one other. Joey, go ahead and kick us off.
President, staying board, thank you very much for this opportunity. Obviously, by now, everyone understands and realizes the size and the scope of the project. But I'm going to tell you a few things that you may or may not know about the project. Number one, what was announced was $10 billion, 1,000 jobs, average wages about $70,000, with a scope of planning to build out around five years. We expect that those numbers are extremely conservative. It's going to be more investment, the wages will be better, and there will potentially be more jobs as well. So we've got a lot to look forward to. If you're familiar with economic development, there's typically three ways that projects are brought to a community. One is through the Mississippi Development Authority. Number two is through your electrical utility provider, in this case, Entergy. And the third is, they sort of walk off the street and you develop them yourself through Makita. This particular project came to us by way of Entergy. This particular project started about five and a half years ago. I was brought on board about five to four and a half years ago. I remember going to Seattle and sitting in a room. And at that point, there were reasons not to choose Mississippi. And they gave us a checklist, and I wrote them down, because I looked them up this morning. One was the flag, one was speed to market, and the others, I'm not going to give you the detail, but let's just say, we were able to check those boxes. And one of the reasons we were to check all, the reasons we were able to check all those boxes is because of boards like you. Nobody realized when we were doing the zoning, the rezoning, the conditional uses, not only for the Madison Board of Supervisors, but the City of Ridgeland as well, okay? No one knew exactly what we were doing at that time. Now, you're going to have a lot of people say that, oh, I've known this for years now. Well, that's a lie. Nobody knew it for years. And I'm going to tell you, my board, one of the things that AWS instilled into us was confidentiality, that it had to remain confidential. And I'm going to tell you, the Makita board did their job. They've known about this for four and a half, five years. They didn't speak a word to anybody about it. We kept it under wraps. Then at the appropriate time, we had to bring everybody up to speed, we did. So we worked together as a team and we made this happen. Now, one other thing that you don't know, that you're probably going to see very, very quickly, is we announced AWS last week, they're going to go vertical before the end of the month. So you're going to see the first building start to rise up out of the dirt, end of the month. We couldn't have done it without your leadership, we couldn't have done it without the City of Ridgeland, and more importantly, we couldn't have done it without Entergy and my board at Makita. So thanks to all of you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Joey.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know that I need to say anything after Joey came up with it, but I will say that it's a great day in Madison County to celebrate a victory that I don't guess any other county will ever be able to celebrate, the biggest economic development project in the state of Mississippi in our history. But I do want to thank you all, the Board of Supervisors, y'all worked very hard to be sure that this happened. But also, a great deal, a big gratitude to Joey for working with our staff, our public works, our community development. You know, a lot of times, there are things going on, and you have to be able to have a vision. And I can say that our Board of Aldermen, with the work they did and some changes they made in our zoning, and then approving going forward with the infrastructure, has made a difference in this project, so I'm very proud of that. And I'd like for y'all to give the Ridgeland Board of Aldermen a hand for what they've done. Joey told me a long time ago that this was going to be a game-changing project. He never would tell me what it was, as he said he couldn't. But as we talked and as they worked with our staff, it was obvious that something was going to happen that was very special, so I'm very excited about that. I'm excited about the Makita board and the fact that I have a relative on that board, Wint McGee, who was able to keep a secret for all that long, so I'm very proud of him also. Anyway, this investment is going to be something that's going to pay off for years to come. Thank you all, and again, thank the Makita board, and just excited about what's going to happen. God bless.
Thank you, Mayor. Haley?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, Board of Supervisors. I'm Haley Visacrely, President/CEO of Entergy Mississippi. And I'm going to follow up on what Joey had to say, and I want to congratulate you all. The leadership that this county, City of Ridgeland, put forth, what happened last week, you earned it. Delbert Hoesman said that the other day at the press conference, and he couldn't say it any better. I've gotten a lot of calls from other counties saying, why aren't you doing this for us? Why didn't you do this for us? I said, hold on a second. We serve all our counties equally. Madison County did what it had to take. It showed leadership. It found a site. It recruited the talent of Joey Deason, the Economic Development Authority and the work that they did. This opportunity happened, and what you did was not only bring a record investment, you brought something that's going to be transformational. And as Joey said, this company has a record of not just coming in in a one-and-done. They invest, they commit, they are a corporate partner. And what you're going to do is going to be generational. We talk a lot about the brain drain and the loss of jobs in Mississippi. You have created something that are going to make younger generations pause and say, hey, I can stay home, have a quality life, and live here. So you've earned every bit of this. And we're proud to serve Madison County, Ridgeland, and all the surrounding areas, and we're proud to work with you, not only to deliver this project, to make them proud of the decision they made. So I'm here to thank you, Madison County, Makita, City of Ridgeland, job well done. We're glad to partner with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil? And I believe Jan is on her way up as well.
I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for letting us have, make some comments this morning. And I have with me Phil Buffington, who is Madison County Business League and Foundation Government Affairs Chairman, and he's here today to help celebrate with us. I just want to make a brief comment. As the voice of business in Madison County, the Business League congratulates and celebrates the leadership of the Board of Supervisors, Makita, Entergy, and the City of Ridgeland for this historical economic development project. And the Business League, their membership and the businesses, I know in Madison County are very anxious to partner with each of you to see this to fruition. So thank you very much. Phil?
Mr. Buffett?
Good morning, Mr. President, Board of Supervisors. Always glad to be up here with y'all. I'm not going to repeat anything anybody said, I don't think. I may, you know me, I get a little wordy. But I really do want to stress this. Madison County is on an incredible streak in economic development, and there's a lot of people that need to be thanked. I'm not going to thank any of the federal, state officials, everybody knows them, everybody knows what they've done. That really kind of comes out early on. But what I do want to do is, is stop today and thank a few people locally, because they're the ones that helped make that difference. It's not just the federal or the state people, it's y'all locally, and a lot of people locally. And I try not to ever mention names, because I always know I'm going to leave somebody out. But I'm going to mention some names today, because I think it's appropriate, and if I leave somebody out, please forgive me. First of all, I want to thank the whole Board of Supervisors. Each of you made this a possibility. There's a lot of moving parts that people don't mention and people don't know about, that y'all do a lot to make sure happens and helps makes this move forward. And one of the things, I know we're here for Amazon, but there's a lot of other good stuff going on in the county. And what we all need to recognize is the effort y'all put forward to make sure that the whole county is developing. And I do want to thank Gerald Steen for all of the work that he's done on the infrastructure projects in the county, in particular, in the middle part of the county, down around Reunion Parkway, and even down in the south part of the county. So I think that's important, but the whole board gets credit for that. I also want to thank the Makita board, because quite frankly, that's a high-paying job, as we all know, and they really put in a lot of hours, but quite frankly, I don't mean that in humor. I really do want to thank the board, especially the ones that are here today, for all their commitment and efforts. But in particular, I want to thank Joey Deason, because I know him personally, and he came here with a mission, and quite frankly, he is working to accomplish that mission, and he works tirelessly. I'll give you an example. Back in December, I told him I wanted to view the mega site. He took me out there and drove me around for two and a half hours, so I could see everything that was going on, describing everything. He's got a commitment to this county, he's got a commitment to economic development. I also want to thank Energy and Haley Visacrely.
He's here today.
Without them, none of this would be possible. And quite frankly, they work tirelessly too. And they have made this a possibility for the county. Haley used the term transformational, and I don't think we can understate that term. This is going to be transformational for this county. But this is just one project. If you will look around and look at everything the county has going on, and look at that as a combined collective economic development deal, then that's what's really transformational. This county is making a difference. There are people that have said in the past, this county can't work together to do everything. We've shown over the last several years that we can work together as a collective group and make things happen, and I think that's very important. I also want to thank the City of Ridgeland and Mayor McGee. They have been very instrumental in a lot of things that are going on in the county, and we appreciate their effort in going forward too. Now, I also want to thank the Madison County Business League. I know Gerald, I'm getting kind of long, but you gave me a mic. I want to thank the Madison County Business League and Foundation Board and Jan Collins, because they work hand-in-hand with all of the groups that I've mentioned, and trying to help make Madison County better. And as a collective group, I think we've done that. Now, I'm going to finish up just on a couple of things. We've done a lot, but we've got a lot to do. And we've got the group of people that can work together to make this happen, and make Madison County not one of the best, but the best county in the state. And I hesitate to say that, because I've got a lot of friends in adjoining counties. But what we're doing in Madison County is going to make a difference to central Mississippi, to all the adjoining counties, and to the entire state. And we can't lose sight of that. Now, what we've really done is, we've helped to change the way people think about Madison County. And that's everybody, everybody in this room, and that's important. And the last thing I want to leave you with is this, you've heard me say it before, and I'll keep saying it again, there's no place I'd rather be than Madison County, Mississippi. Thank y'all for everything you do, thank you for everything that everybody in this room does, and let's keep moving forward.
Thank you, Phil. I know, we appreciate each one of you coming up and speaking, and each one of you had a tone, and it led towards leadership. And we all know that without leadership, not any of this would have happened. And as Haley mentioned, as Lieutenant Governor mentioned, this project was earned. And we started this whole project back in 2016, when we purchased the property where the mega site is now. And when we purchased that property, you know, I think it's $10, $12 million we gave for it, you know, we had a lot of pushback. A lot of people, this pushback, said, who's going to locate next to Canton? Who's going to do that? You know, but the Board of Supervisors had the foresight and vision to move forward with this, and we did. With Joey on board pushing that project, we did. We pushed it, with getting a lot of pushback. Makita board, hey, they was definitely on board, you know, with the project. And so with that being said, we moved down the road, Amazon came in, Clark Beverage is building out there as well, which is a great project. Now, the announcement with Amazon coming in as well, man, it's just great, and it goes back to show that if you have a vision and you implement that vision, you can make things happen. City of Ridgeland, Mayor, Alderman, appreciate each one of you being here today, y'all have that vision, had that vision for many years. If you didn't have it ready for this, Amazon wouldn't be locating there in the city, in your city. But you and Alderman showed leadership, and that's the reason Amazon is there today. Haley, again, couldn't do it without Entergy. You're right. And the board, I mean, just couldn't do it without y'all. Y'all are a partner, and a big partner to Madison County. And so we appreciate it tremendously, and again, this is a partnership. It's not one organization or one group, it is a partnership. And on top of that, as I think Phil mentioned earlier, the Business League, guys, you can't say enough about the Business League. Their businesses here in Madison County, they have supported this Board of Supervisors in what we do, and Makita, to move forward. And that's what we got to have, is everyone come together to, for one voice, and that's what we're doing. With the cities and the towns that are interested in working with the board, we're going to continue to work with you to make great things happen in Madison County. And so we appreciate each one of your leadership and the ability and consistency to move forward, regardless who's out there trying to push back on us. This board will continue to move forward, and we'll continue to see better days ahead for Madison County to make quality of life much better than what it is today in Madison County, and we looking forward to that happening as well. Want to give y'all a big thank you all. Thank you. Anything else on the board would like to say? Would like to have it come in?
Yeah, I got things to say. I think Joey came up and took all his recognition, and he got the right to, but he didn't identify his board members that's here. So Makita board member that's here in the room, you ain't got to worry about standing stick your arm up.
I tell you what I would like for them to do. I would like for them to come up, just to come up and be on the camera, and just come up, just don't have to stay any time, so y'all come on, Ed, Wint. And I'm going to ask for the Alderman in Ridgeland to come up as well, right after they do, if you will, if it don't matter. Just come up, and people don't know who's on the Makita board.
And one more thing, Gerald, I mean, Joey said about that big payday they getting paid.
Yeah.
They getting paid $0 to serve, $0 to serve. And there was a certain group that was here that went out and did the search and brought Joey here. Who was on that Makita board when they went out and got Joey and brought him here? Put your arms up.
Good job.
There were four right there. Great.
Okay. Come on, we'll just stand up behind you.
Yeah. Those four were part of the core that went out and brought Joey here, and this is where everything started.
I tell you what, we're going to stand behind them, and also when the Alderman and Mayor comes up, so let's just ease out to the front. We're going to stand behind them.
Look, as they're making their way up here, I will tell you one thing. This board has been so supportive of me and our efforts. I will tell you, I've pushed them to their limits at times, and they've had to figure out whether or not there are certain things that we could do, but they've given me that ability, and I truly appreciate them. Thank you.
Y'all ready?
Oh, we're good. One more time, sorry, y'all, that ought to do it. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank y'all.
Haley, come on up, we should have got you in here as well, Alderman, Rich, Mayor. Ready to play some more?
Now, let's play some more. All right. One, two, three, one, two, three, two, three. Great.
All right. Appreciate everyone being here, and as they ease out, we're going to also adjust the schedule, and I'm going to go to item 77. Pastor Brooks, I think you're on item 77, you want to come up to the mic?
Yeah, he was at our...
Paul, we're going to skip down and get that one, 77, right quick, since he volunteered and led the prayer for us.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I looked at it close. Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve, and this is on item 76, the Fairview Missionary Baptist Church.
No, that's 77.
I mean, 77, I'm sorry. Item 77.
I'll second it.
Got a second, Supervisor Banks, discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed? Thank you.
All right, Pastor. You're good to go.
Thank you, Pastor.
Hey, man, thank the board so much.
Appreciate the prayer this morning. Okay, we're going to go back up to the top and start at our concerned citizens. Mr. Weaver? Please come up and state your name, like, we already know you, but for the record.
All right, all right. What we got here? So, an unprecedented...
Yeah, I hear you. Thank you.
My name is Tim Weaver, and I have been building homes and developing property in Madison County for over 25 years. What I'm bringing to you today, I've never seen happen, so I'm asking for a little understanding that this has no precedent, therefore, I'm not real sure that everything that I'm being told applies. Basically, I developed a piece of property in 2022. We platted it in January of 2023. Therefore, the property should have been taxed that year as acreage. The tax assessor's office picked that plat up and sent out tax bills in December of '23, taxing it as lots. Well, that was the first that anybody knew that there had been an error at the assessor's office. I got in touch with Mr. Kennedy, and he got right on it, and got before the board, and got it approved for the tax collector's office to refund those taxes, because they were taxed in error. Keep in mind the word "error." Mr. Kennedy then turned around and, I guess, put the parcel back together and did all what he was supposed to do. Well, we kept contacting the assessor's office, saying, where's the refund, where's the refund, where's the refund? And we kept being told, be patient, be patient, be patient, this has never happened, we're going to take care of it. In July, the builder that had paid most of these taxes received five refunds, and he should have received about $10,000, and I think he received $2,000. So again, we started calling the assessor's office, what happened, what happened, what happened? And at that point, we were told that it was easier to refund the taxpayer, who did pay the tax, although the builder at closing had paid the majority through proration. You've got a little email in there, and this is from Lisa Duval, and there's some highlighting on it, and it says, I'm working on this dilemma. And it says that this was a decision that was made by Kay Pace, the paying out of the tax. Her reasoning was that it would take a lot of investigation to determine who made all the payments, and it was more expeditious to just send the refund to the owners. She spoke with the current tax collector, Mr. CJ Jay Garavalli, and made him aware, and he agrees it was done wrong. But there was nothing he could do at that point. They offered to supply us a list of the names, and for... They offered to supply us a list of the names and for us to go collect the money that they had aired in paying out to those homeowners. The board did approve the refunds. It was the matter of how it was refunded that we don't agree with. The homeowners were supposed to get back $2,300. Instead, they got back $10,000. The builder was supposed to get back roughly $10,000. Instead, he got back $2,000. We're just asking the board to give the tax assessor some direction in how to make this right. It's not our fault that it was ever taxed wrong. It's not our fault that the tax assessor or collector wouldn't accept our HUDs so that she would see the prorations and send the monies back where they were supposed to go. And as I said, this is unprecedented. It's never happened in the 30 years I've been building and developing in Madison County. So I don't know how you say the statute says when the statute never took into consideration that a piece of property that was not supposed to be taxed in this manner at that time was taxed. So, you know, I'm asking this board if it can give the taxes collector some direction. You know, maybe it's to go back and send out a letter to the homeowners and say, we sent you this refund in error. It should have been $200. You got $500. Please send 300 back. If not, we're gonna lean your property. Because if I send them a letter, they're just simply gonna go, nah, thank you, Mr. Weaver, for for the money.
Yeah.
So again, we understand there's statutes and all those things, but this should have never been taxed, should have never been paid. So I'm just asking the board if there's something that the board can do to make this right.
All right, Tim, thank you for that. CJ here this morning. Norman, I know he mentioned your name. Are you familiar with this?
I am very familiar with it. I think he covered everything. I guess one thing I would touch on and remind the board, I mean, this has been processed properly. At the time it was brought to our attention, we got it on the next meeting, first meeting we could get this on, board approved it. It was forwarded to the tax collector's office for the refunds. And I mean, the timing was just really bad when it was brought to our attention. It was almost a year after lots had been sold. I believe tax notices went out on December the 9th of 2022. You'd probably sold most of the lots by then, had you not? I think the majority of the lots were sold and Tim contacted me the end of January '23 and it was processed with the board February of '23. By law, and y'all can help me out here, I think it's the collector's responsibility, I'm not the tax collector, to refund the taxpayer. And, you know, unless we have something showing that the refunds went to someone other than the person that paid the taxes, I think it was handled properly. I've got some documents here. If I need to pass them out, I'll be glad to do so.
We just, we just need to hear some direction from you or maybe the tax, the collector on what guidance we need to clear this up.
Just one last comment. Norman said by law, these things. Well, by law, it should have never been taxed in the manner it was taxed.
Right.
I don't disagree with that, but it was corrected. We we deal with that a lot here at the board level, the tax assessor's office and the collector's office, we, the county, right? It was it was brought to our attention. Page one of this handout is where the county advertises to the public for inspection of the tax rolls that are over here on this counter. It's the taxpayers' responsibility to check their assessments every year and if they disagree with the assessment, to come see me, the tax assessor, or attend the equalization hearings and file an appeal if we don't come to an agreement on it. This was not brought to my attention for a full year. The assessments were out, the tax notices were mailed, and I don't know if the if the tax bills, they should have been mailed to to Tim, because he was owner of record January 1, 2022. I mean, here we are, two years after the fact, still discussing this. We don't deal with prorations. If you look at the last page of this packet, I mean, the last document, I've got two warranty deeds in there and on page three of the warranty deed, at the bottom, the last sentence, it states that the guarant, the grantor is responsible for the avalorum taxes for the current year. Within within the builder or individual that bought, the documents that they're involved in with Tim, Mr. Weaver, the developer, there should be some true-up clauses in there. I know the closing attorneys cover themselves for estimation of taxes and, you know, I I agree, we we had some mistakes, they were corrected. We are where we are today. I don't know if the correct amounts were refunded. That's not what I deal with.
Right.
If that is the case, then we really need to look into that, for sure. And anything Tim can provide to us would be very helpful, the collector and my office. But we've received nothing.
Right. Okay. Well, you know, I think at this point, Mike, you and the administrator work with Norman and the tax collector CJ and let's see, see what we need to do to try to make this right. Not sure what that is, but if y'all will, in the next couple of weeks, work with, work with them and and bring something back to us at the next board meeting on how how we can correct this. Tim, that's what we'll do and and not sure what the right answer is, but we understand what happened.
Yeah, and and I appreciate it. And and, you know, I know the tax assessor's office has a lot of work that they do and they do a good job, so not beating Norman up, but at the end of the day, it's not fair that we're out almost $10,000 because of an error that never should have happened.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Tim, and we'll get some kind of direction at the next board meeting. Thank you. Greg, are there other concerned citizens?
There are. The first name on my list is Emerald White.
Please come up and state your name and give your address in a couple of minutes, please.
I'm Emerald White. Good morning.
Good morning.
President to the board. I'm Emerald White. I reside at 629 Mount Zion Road. On the way to my concern is the road going to the church. On the way going to the church is is real bad. It's it's real bad. It's, I wonder, what can we do, if anything, about that? It's it's real bad, you know, for the older people.
Paul, is that yours?
Could they step up? You built up Mount Zion Road lately?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Man, he help. This is that road manager, sir, right there, the one that talking now.
I know we just got to do some lawn patch in there. It just hasn't been patched so much. There's just, it just don't matter what you do, it's rough and it gonna ride rough, so it's really need over overlaying. And I think I got it on the road plan for it to be done if y'all approve it.
Yeah. Reason why he probably hadn't fixed it here the last month or so, or two, because once it get in the winter time, it's hard to get small amount of asphalt. And sometimes of the year during the holiday, the asphalt company shut down. Like Mr. Bacon saying, it been patched a lot. He got it on the non-funded list. The key word is non-funded list. So he gonna go up there and do some of them long passes at first opportunity he get.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next person on the consent agenda?
Next up is Walter Young Jr., who wishes to speak about consent item 24.
Consent item 24, okay. Please come up and state your name, give address in a couple of minutes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Item 24.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Walter Young, 346 Pinewood Lane, Ridgeland, Mississippi. I am in District 3 of your esteemed president.
Yes, sir.
I'm coming this morning to talk about consent item 24. I would like for it to be reviewed and removed based on the fact that it's an incomplete application. It may be illegal, incomplete application.
Mike, you looking at there?
Looking at it now. What's what's illegal about it?
We don't know what district. We don't know if they've been convicted of a crime. We don't know if they've been convicted of a felon. We don't know if they served time in the penitentiary. We don't know if they are resident of the area. And if you look at the phone number, the mailing address is is in the area, but the phone number is a Houston area code number. So it's incomplete if you were to look at this at face value.
What I'm looking at, the name and it don't say, don't say a county, don't say a district.
Oh, Joanna Pearson?
Right.
Yeah. On its face, it's incomplete. On its face.
I just asked that it be removed.
We have this truth they are here. Sir? Cause we have this truth they are here to you.
Pat, do you have any info on this?
I've not seen it to review. It's up to the parties, since this is a primary election.
Right.
And it's up to the party to review the applications.
Well, it doesn't say what party she's a party. She doesn't mention her party.
I've not seen it. I don't know.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't give, yeah, their party or anything of that nature.
Yeah.
Why don't we, since it's been brought to our attention, why don't we just pull that item and us, let's follow up and just look, look through that before we approve that.
I appreciate it.
Since it's been brought to our attention.
I appreciate it.
On on that one.
Thank you.
And that was item 24, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we'll take care of that when when we get down to consent item. Greg, the next?
Next one already has an item on the agenda, so that should be, should be done for concerned citizens.
All right, now we are down to consent items.
No, you got one scheduled.
That's right, I'm sorry. We do have matters of business. Dr. Wright?
Call it up.
Yes, ma'am, come on up. And Mr. Span? Y'all, please come up and even though you've been up before, state your name and give us your address, please.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Fonzie Brown Wright, a proud Madison Countyan. So to Mr. President, members of the Madison County Board of Supervisors, I wish to thank Administrator Greg Higginbotham for the invitation to reappear before you today. So good morning again. In our January, your January meeting, the staff, faculty and students of the University of St. Thomas from St. Paul, Minnesota, was scheduled to also be with us today. The importance of that visit and in keeping with Canton's rich history, I tour and I do a master class on civil rights with that university for the last 11 years. So their significance was to come and share with you and share with us the history of the moment. I tour them and one of the places that we always go is to the Madison County Courthouse. I was also scheduled to bring copies of the official press release where the Mississippi Humanities Council approved the proposal that I submitted before you to place a marker in, hopefully, as we agreed, in the Madison County courtyard. And I thank you for your unanimous, unanimous support, but instead of giving you a copy of the press release, I want to do two things. I want to give to Mr. Higginbotham a publication from the University of St. Thomas, which includes the his, some history of this great city, the city of Canton. And if you would please hold that for your archives, I would be most grateful. But instead of me giving you the press release that I had planned to give you, I have the gentleman who actually originated the press release and is in charge of, in charge of all of the markers for the state of Mississippi, Mr. John Span from the Mississippi Humanities Council. John, your time. Thank you so much.
Mr. Span, if you would, just give your name and address. We know your name, but give your address, please.
All right, my name is John Span. I used to be a Madison County resident, used to live in Dinsmore in Ridgeland, but now I live in North Jackson and so I don't know if that counts, but anyways, just wanna come here to represent the Humanities Council and say that this project is free to the community. This is a project that the Humanities Council and Visit Mississippi have been in partnership with since 20, like, middle of 2021. And so this is free because of a lot of the Economic Development Association of the country gave a lot of excess money to Mississippi to do tourism and so the Visit Mississippi organization wanted to put a lot of funding into the Mississippi Freedom Trail. We know that the Blues Trail, the Country Music Trail have been extensive, you know, they have over 100 markers and probably collectively 300 markers. But when we got on board with this partnership, the Mississippi Freedom Trail had about 32. And so with our expertise and and putting things together, we have gotten 47 new approved markers with Ms. Fonzie, Dr. Fonzie Brown Wright included. And so basically what we want to say to to y'all is, thank you for approving the marker. The next step is to see where it's gonna go and then from there, you know, we'll have writers to write the the correct history, the wordage that she will be approving so we can put, to recognize that Canton did have a freedom movement here and that local people like Ms. Brown Wright was a part of that and changing not only the state but changing the nation. And then from there, we would work on a unveiling ceremony. So what you see, what was been passed out to you is a kind of like rendering of what it would look like. Now, what you have in your hand is the Grenada integration. We just got finished unveiling the marker in Grenada, actually, last month, January 13th. That was a great celebration and we hope to have a great celebration for Ms. Brown Wright as well. We work with the Visit Mississippi organization, so it's free of charge to, like, the programming and all of that is free of charge, speakers free of charge, but we would like to have the city, you know, pay for food and drinks if that's possible or anything like that. So, oh, the county, food and drinks.
Oh, yeah, we let the city pay for it. That's not a problem.
But other than that, other than that, we just want y'all to know that we thank you for uplifting the history here in Madison County, in Canton, and uplifting one of your own. And if there's any other questions that you have for me on this matter entail, like, I'm I'm all ears, so.
Okay.
I got one question for Dr. Fonzie. Do you live in Madison County now?
Unfortunately, no, just one county down, but I'm in Madison County quite often.
You're in Heinz County?
I'm in Heinz County.
Okay. We appreciate you taking the effort and making this happen, both of y'all. And Greg, we appreciate you working with them as well and make it happen. And you say the next step is really placement?
Yeah.
Yeah, and when do you think that that may happen?
So it takes six months for the marker to be made.
Okay.
And I'll be working with our writers to to get the the word and that wordage and everything correct, but it's take six months to for it to be done, so it could be ready by the end of this year, probably around November, December.
Right.
So around that time. But it'll be ordered and ready to go and if we can't fit it in November, December, I'm sure we can work it out for next year, but it already be paid for and everything.
Great deal. And if you will, just stay in contact with Greg, Administrator, when you have it and then maybe come back and Greg could tell us when.
for, um, uplifting the history here in Madison County, in Canton, and uplifting one of your own. And, um, if there's any other questions that you have for me, uh, on this matter in, in, in tail, like, I'm, I'm all ears, so.
Okay.
I got one question for Dr. Fonzie. Do you live in Madison County now?
Unfortunately, no, just one county down, but I'm in Madison County quite often.
You're in Heinz County?
I'm in Heinz County.
Okay, uh.
We appreciate you taking the effort and making this happen, uh, both of y'all. And, uh, Greg, we appreciate you, uh, working with them as well and make it happen. And you say the next step is really placement?
Yeah.
Yeah, and when do you think that, that may happen?
So it takes six months for the marker to be made.
Okay.
And, um, I'll be working with our writers to, to get the, the word and that wordage and everything correct. Uh, but it's take six months to, for it to be done, so it could be ready by the end of this year, uh, probably around November, December.
Right.
Uh, so around that time. But it'll be ordered and ready to go. And if we can't fit it in November, December, I'm sure we can work it out for next year, but it already be paid for and everything.
Great deal, and if you will, just, uh, stay in contact with Greg Administrator when you have it. And then, um, maybe come back and Greg could tell us when, when this would take place and, you know, where the supervisors can participate and where we can look at getting some refreshments, you know, as well, uh, to help, to help move this forward.
Thank you so very much.
You bet.
Do you have any in mind of where you might wanna put this at now?
Yes, I do, and in my proposal to you that you approved, I asked that it be near the, the steps of the Madison County Courthouse. Uh, if you read your proposal again, I ask, in the significance of that, that I was the first black, black to work in the Madison County Courthouse as Secretary to the Madison County Board of Election Commissioners. Every year when I bring tour groups from all over the country to Canton, you don't know it, but it's not hardly a month that passes that I don't have a group from Switzerland, the Netherlands, from all over the world to come to Canton to visit the Freedom House, the Canton Courthouse, Sister Thea Bowman's home, to highlight the locations of where history happened in this county. I also bring them to the steps of the Madison County Courthouse and I ask them to stand on the steps. That's where Dr. King stood when he addressed more than twenty thousand people in the courtyard of Madison County. I introduced Dr. King and I worked in the Madison County Courthouse as Secretary to the Madison County Election Commissioners. So I thought it was only appropriate that, that, uh, that it be in the Madison County Courtyard near the courthouse steps, not to interfere with the two events of your, um, flea market and/or the Canton City Lights, and not to interfere with that, but to be placed in that as a symbol of this is where much history happened. Mrs. Coretta Scott King spoke on those same courthouse steps. So I think it's only fitting that we raise up the history of that building, uh, in that manner. So that's where I would like it placed, but again, we'll collaborate on that.
And seeing all that, uh, Greg?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you might need to get, uh, her and John Wallace in connection because we have John Wallace looking into making the, uh, old courthouse a museum.
Yes.
So some of the things that you saying, I would like to make sure that they get added into the record of going into that museum, not just on the step, but inside the building also. So can you get?
Absolutely.
Her and John Wallace together? If you have been living in Madison County, I would suggest to put you on the committee, but.
Okay, well, let's let me be an advisor, but I have plenty of archival documents that I can help, that I can assist and give to this project, if that's okay with you. I have plenty of documents that would, I think, um, buttress the museum idea, and I love that cause I think it needs to be a place of significance because it is. We let marches there to get people registered to vote, and so we did a lot of things around that courthouse. So I think it's befitting that the courthouse stand out again as a place of, of significance.
We plan on taking a picture there today, this board here, on the steps.
Well, it's gonna be on this one back here.
Oh, we go, you change it?
No, that's one that I think we always.
No, we did on the old one last year. It's in the picture where the picture is.
We can, we can do it on this other side.
There it is, back, back here. Yeah, right there.
Okay, well, I stood there many days, I was in that courthouse many days, bringing people to register and bringing all of my tour groups, and I have them to stand as a symbolic way of remembering Dr. King's visit and my introducing him and then working in the courthouse. So that's significance for me and that's what I have requested. And I get with John and I hope that the Humanities Council will take that into great consideration.
It's on y'all.
John, we appreciate it.
Oh, they've already approved it.
As Paul, as Paul indicated, uh, Greg, if you will, put, uh, put her with Mr. John Wallace and.
Yes, sir.
Man, we appreciate it tremendously.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
And have a great day. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, any other concerned citizens or, I know that wasn't concerned citizens, but. Okay, moving on down to consent items, uh, I know, uh, item twenty-four we, uh, gonna remove. Do we, are there any other items that supervisors like to remove? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent items set for item twenty-four?
Uh, I have a comment, but that hadn't got there yet, sorry, I jumped the gun a little.
Yeah, okay, do we have a motion to approve consent items that's set for item twenty-four?
Motion.
Got a motion Supervisor Griffin, I'll second, discussion?
Um, I just wanted to briefly state, uh, item twenty, the unpaid adverum taxes. Uh, this is as of twelve thirty-one, this is, uh, Kay Pace's, she was legally required to do this upon leaving office. So she's been in office for a very long time, so this type of document hasn't been in the minutes for a very long time. Um, I know there is, I found my, my name on the list of unpaid taxes, uh, when I went through, was going through the agenda, uh, as well as pretty much everybody you see in front of it right here today with the exception of our esteemed president, uh, Mr. Gerald Steen.
Yeah, I pay my taxes.
Uh, the.
My name shouldn't be on there either, cause I pay mine.
So here, everybody freaks out when they see their name on it, especially, uh, that's why I'm clarifying. Um, my taxes personally showed being paid on twelve twenty-two, which is before twelve thirty-one. Um, but it was explained to me by the tax collector that your mortgage companies use a third party. They send all the taxes to them, they pull that money and then send it to the county. So when the tax collector pulled my payment date, my records showed twelve twenty-two, his records showed one eleven due to that lump sum that comes in from the third parties that all of our mortgage companies do. Um, so if you find your name on here, don't panic, don't call Greg, uh, don't call the tax collector. Uh, just verify online, however you verify, look at your receipt to verify, or look at your mortgage company to verify that you have paid your taxes, cause most likely, unless you know you haven't paid your taxes, um, this is nothing to be concerned about.
Okay, uh, with that being said, we have a motion on the table, have a second. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I do see Stephanie, uh, appreciate you being here, would you like to come up and address the item or two?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What I have to say is not nearly as exciting as the things y'all have said today, this has been a great meeting.
It has been.
Um, I have a few points to make in my continuing work with the former tax collector's office. In this, in January, the dispersment of the December collected taxes was done, January twentieth. And so that should be the last dispersments that are made under Kay Pace's tax collector reign. Also, in the month of December, over a hundred, I think a hundred and seventy-four tax refunds cleared the bank. And I, we've talked about the refund process, I told you that there were numerous refunds issued in the last thirty days she was in office, and so that many of them have gone through. I'm sure we'll have a similar amount in January. Um, that's a positive. Also, finally, um, we did not have the February, I mean, the January bank statements as of Friday. And so we can't reconcile those accounts, uh, we should have them today, we'll get those done. And then those will be able to be kind of finalized at the end of, you know, by the, by your next meeting. So that would mean everything's closed out. I think those accounts will have to remain open probably through the end of February just to give those outstanding checks written in December sixty days to clear. So those three things relate to that. The fourth thing I'll tell you is that this week our office is starting to work with, um, the new tax collector and, um, just some cash journal reconciliation things that will help him until he gets the right personnel in place to take that over.
Good.
Okay.
Sounds good, so sounds like within the next two weeks, we should have everything closed out for twenty twenty-three.
That is my, um, plan, I mean, it should be, I can't imagine any reason it would not be.
Yeah, and if you would, uh, we would like to have that report at the next board meeting, just to have it on record and, and have it closed out and, and we know that there's maybe some issues come up a little bit later on, just like the day with, uh, I think, Tim Weaver, you know? And so if you will, just kind of look into that as well, you know, with the administrator and see, see what we need to do to, to, you know, get that fixed and move forward.
I will, and so I will present something to the board in writing then.
Sounds great.
Saying that we have wrapped up as of January thirtieth, okay?
I know it's been a long road, but we bout, bout to get there.
We're almost there, I've learned a lot and you've been very good to work with me, so thank you.
Thank you, and we'll see you at the next board meeting. Okay, we already have, uh, done item fifty-five, which is the Amazon service celebration. Item fifty-six, our election commissioner, Trussdale.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I've, uh, got the estimate, uh, for the moving company that would be able to handle our election equipment. And we went ahead and got a est, um, a figure for both elections, the primary and the general. And, uh, we were asking that, uh, the board president be able to sign this so that we could submit it to the vendor.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval?
Motion.
Got a motion Supervisor Baxter, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
Thank y'all.
Thank you, Pat, appreciate it. All right, next is item fifty-seven, Keisha.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
I bring to you item number fifty-seven to approve the declaration of sole source for Tri-State Truck for the Road Department. As you see attached, the Madison County Road Department has requisition for the Tri-State Truck to replace a clutch on the twenty sixteen Mack truck. As this attachment letter states, it indicates that Tri-State Truck is the only licensed vendor to repair for any Mack truck. I recommend that the board declare that this is a sole source and authorize the issuance of the purchase order to Tri-State Truck for ten thousand one hundred thirty dollars for said repair of the clutch on the twenty sixteen Mack truck per attached quote.
Make that motion.
Got a motion, uh, by Supervisor Griffin, do I have a second? I'll second, discussion, all in favor? Aye, all opposed?
Item number fifty-eight, I'm asking that you approve the declaration of sole source with Puckett Machinery for the Road Department. As attached, the Madison County Road Department has requisition for Puckett Machinery to replace the wiring harness chip spreader. As attached letter indicates that Puckett Machinery is the sole source dealer for entry, equipment and service in central and southern Mississippi. I recommend that the board declare that this is a sole source, authorize the issuance of the purchase order to Puckett, I'm sorry, Puckett Machinery for eight thousand four hundred thirteen dollars and forty cent for said repair of the wiring harness chip spreader per attached quote.
Motion.
Got a motion Supervisor Griffin, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second Supervisor Banks, uh, Mike, when it said sole source, so Greg, we're all good with that?
Yes, that's a factual determination to be made by this.
Yes, sir.
We're good with that too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye, all opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Keisha.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm coming to you all today to ask you all to approve the proclamation of the local emergency.
Hey, do I have a motion? I'll make the motion for approval, do I have a second? Second Supervisor Griffin, discussion, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Thank you. Jury?
Morning, Board.
Good morning.
Buildings and Grounds has several items, uh, first up, number sixty is to approve amendment to an existing preventative maintenance agreement for the detention center. This is for Terry Services, we are adding, uh, preventative maintenance of smoke exhaust fans over the detention center that had not previously been on that contract.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Move.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks, do I have a second? I'll second, discussion, all in favor? Aye, all opposed?
Items, uh, sixty-one, sixty-two and sixty-four are all in relation to the Circuit Court, uh, project, renovation addition. That is a asbestos inspection survey, a survey of the building itself and roof cuts to check the condition of the roof. I'd like to combine all those into one.
And that's item sixty-one, sixty-two and sixty-four?
Four, yes, sir.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval?
Move.
Motion Supervisor Banks, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Supervisor Griffin, discussion, all in favor? Aye, all opposed?
Item sixty-three is to approve a proposal for architectural engineering services for a Madison County tax building with Dean Architecture.
I'll make a motion for approval, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Supervisor Banks, discussion, all in favor? Aye, all opposed?
And the last item is an interlocal agreement between the City of Ridgeland, the City of Madison and Madison County for our annual household hazardous waste day.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
Motion Supervisor Banks, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Supervisor Griffin, and which city is sponsoring, or which city is holding?
This year will be the City of Madison. We were planning to have it at Madison Central High School on March twenty-third. I believe the starting time will be seven o'clock, once that's verified, we'll start, uh, handing out that information.
Okay, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Tim? Thank you, jury.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
First item I have for your consideration is the twenty twenty-four unfunded road plan.
Do I have a motion for approval?
Move.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks, I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yes, I wanna make sure that everyone heard unfunded road plan. Not when you just see your, see your road on there and say, hey, it gonna be fixed, this is unfunded, thank you.
No, thank you Supervisor Griffin for explaining that, uh, very important. All right, uh, all in favor, say aye, all opposed?
All right, the next, I guess, seven items, I'm gonna briefly, uh, introduce, I guess, what these are. Um, this is the state aid program for this board term. The state aid, uh, allocates money to each county. And the state aid revenue for this board term for general use is four point seven million. This is, this money can be used for roads or bridges. In addition to that, we have in the local system bridge replacement fund, we have nine hundred and eighty thousand roughly. In the state aid bridge fund, we have one point two million roughly. So overall, we have six point nine million in state aid bridge funds for this four-year board term. So with that, I have the next seven items for your consideration.
Uh, before we hear those, I would like to, uh, make a statement or ask a question.
Okay.
Um, so these state aid funds are just state aid funds only, there's no, gonna be no county funds to add it into this to fund all these projects, is that correct?
Absolutely, you could add county funds to these to extend these funds further if you wish.
Um, but as of right now, with the four, so there's not enough money to fund all seven of these, right?
Correct, yes, these, these seven, um, items sixty-seven through seventy-three constitute more than the four point seven million dollars.
Okay, um, I spent about four hours in my, subjected my wife and children to about four hours in the car yesterday. Um, I drove every inch of every single one of these roads. Um, and they range in, uh, let's just say, from very poor to very good. My estimation is that, uh, in order of poorness to goodness, which should be taken into consideration, um, is that, uh, number sixty-seven Loring Road is in poor condition, there is a school on that road. Um, I didn't feel safe driving on that road with my family. Um, I'm sure everybody in the county up in that area does not feel safe with their children riding on those buses. Um, this is a definite no-brainer road that needs to be done. Um, I also, going down the list, um, number sixty-nine.
Now, we're gonna, we're gonna take these, we're gonna take these individuals now.
Let me finish, please.
I mean, that's okay, but we're gonna take.
I'm just giving my report because I actually drove these roads.
Hold on one second.
And I'm certain that nobody else has.
Hold on now.
All right, so Cox Ferry Road is not heavily trafficked, but it is very poor. It was, it, nobody that lives in Madison County should have to drive and work and live off of that road. I doubt anybody works off that road, but they live there, and they don't want to drive on those roads. The next worst road, also which contains a lot of school buses, is Madison, is the Rice Road from Hoy Road into, into St. Augustine. There, it is very poor. It hasn't been overlaid since 2003. There has been no work done to it, it's patched, it's rated by the state aid district, it's very poor. It gets approximately 10,000 cars a day on it, and our children ride on those school buses. And the bus drivers and the drivers on that road constantly dodge potholes. As well as that, those three roads are by far the worst on this list. Now, I did also want to give an honorable mention to Verilia Road. Verilia Road, I drove the section that Carl wanted, and I missed where it stopped. And I proceeded a little bit further. My Suburban became airborne on one section of the road because it is so poor. It is third world country. It makes me sad to know that roads like this exist in Madison County when we have so much given to us. So I would like for a motion right now to approve 67, which is Loring Road, 69, which is Cox Ferry Road, 73, which is Rice Road from Hoy to St. Augustine. And I will prob, I probably need to do this in a second motion, but I would love to send back our number 68, Verilia Road, to our state aid engineer and let him use whatever money we have left to draft up an extension of what Mr. Banks said that needed to be done on that road to get as much of that road paved as possible. That is my, so I guess my first motion is that number 67, number 69, and number 73, I would like to put a motion in for us to approve those roads to be funded by our state aid money.
Okay, we have a motion. Tim, I heard what you said earlier, taking them individually. So we have a motion on the table for those three, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. I'm going to make a substitute motion and go back and take them individually as you requested and vote on them individually. So my substitute motion is to go back and just take each road individually and move forwards from there. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a second Supervisor Griffin, okay? We'll take the substitute motion up first, and basically what we'll do, start at 67, and then we'll vote and vote.
So do we not get to vote on the second, on the substitute motion?
We're going to substitute motion now.
We're gonna, we don't get to vote whether or not we substitute the motion?
No, we're voting on substitute motion.
Substitute motion comes before.
Comes before.
Okay, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
So, all in favor of substitute motion, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Okay, we're going to start at 67. And like I said, we're going to take these individually as you indicated at the beginning, Tim. On 67 is Loring Road. The amount of money on Loring Road is how much?
All right, Loring Road, the termini is Stump Bridge Road to Highway 17. And the amount of money associated with this project would be $1,774,545.45.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion Supervisor Griffin, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Supervisor Banks, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Item 68?
All right, this is Verilia Road. Limits of this road are Livingston Vernon Road to, it says Rec Road, but I believe this is, oh gosh, Vital Records Road, what is the, Southern Vital Records Road. The money associated with this is $582,272.73.
All right, got a motion?
Move.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks, I'll second, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Item 69?
This one is Cox Ferry Road. This is the Madison County limit to Joe Hall Road. This project has $887,272.73 associated with it.
Move.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks, do I have a second? Second Supervisor Griffin, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Item 70?
All right, this is Rice Road. The limits of this are Pear Orchard Road to Old Canton Road. This is a little different than the, what is in the agenda, but we modified this due to a part of what was originally in there not being state aid eligible. So Pear Orchard Road to Old Canton Road for a budget of $776,363.64.
All right, I'll make that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Supervisor Banks, discussion?
Discussion. Do not hold a vote yet. So, I drove this road as well. I would let my grandmother eat hot soup in the backseat of the car on this road. It is so smooth and nice. I believe the last time these roads were done were in 2014, 2015. The road's 10 years old, it looks great. That said, I have some Mississippi code here. Mississippi code, and I don't know how to read this, 69-9-25. And it states, "It shall be the duty of the several Board of Supervisors to properly maintain all state aid roads in their respective counties after construction of any such roads with state aid monies. If essential maintenance is not properly and regularly carried on," remember, Rice Road in Madison from Hoy to St. Augustine hasn't been touched in 21 years? It can buy a beer the last time it can do. If it's not approved today, it will be four more years before we get state aid road for this. This road will be 25 years old and require even more money. Nothing is going to be cheaper in five years.
Okay.
But that said, if such maintenance is not doing and continued with 60 days from the date of such notice, basically what I'm saying is if we misappropriate state funds on roads that do not need maintenance, the state has and will, under the leadership of Carl, Paul, and Gerald, withheld state funds. I think that we need to vote no on any roads that do not need maintenance.
Okay, anything else?
That is all, because we're going to be out of money by the time we get to Trey and me.
That's, that's a good deal, and, and you know, we've all ridden these roads. You know, Supervisor Brandon thinks that he's the only one that rides a road, the only one has a thought and opinion on these roads. But, you know, the City of Ridgeland asked me to put it on, it does need to be worked on.
If this is the worst road in the city.
Hold on one second, hold on.
Ridgeland has got it good.
Ho, hold on. And so, you know, we'll just move forward with it and, and go from there, but all of us ride these roads. And we have the road plan, you can put the roads on the road plan, all of us can, so anyway.
Are we going to spend county money on roads that are getting funded by the state? Is what your suggestion? So, say I get a million dollars, I should spend 90% of it on a road that could be funded by the state and not by our taxpayers here in this room?
You know, the, and you'll learn, you'll learn as you go forward.
I'm sure you'll teach me.
No, no. You'll, you'll learn along the way. You'll learn along the way that there's never enough of money to do all of the state aid roads, all, hold on one second, all of the fun.
Is that you do not care about what the citizens of Madison County need.
Hey, I'm voting just like you voted.
You are not voting just like I vote.
I voted on the first three. Yeah, hey, and you said the table was worse.
I said myself that those vote, that those roads needed replacing.
All right, we got a motion, got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Hey, wait, 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 I got, I got a question, it's a second, I got a question for Tim. How much, it's 4.7 total for paving. And what is the cost of the, of the District 5 through 3? Oh, gosh, you're putting me on the spot.
It is, District 5 through 3, if they got all of their roads, would be $4,685,907.02, which is approximately $14,000 less than our budget. Amazing that District 2 and District 1, the Republican districts, are not getting any money.
All right, we got a motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
No.
Tim, keep going.
Okay. Next one is item 71, Pear Orchard Road. The limits of this modified a little bit as well. They go from North Park Drive to Rice Road, budget of 600, or, yeah, $665,271.54.
Okay, I'll make a motion for approval, do I have a second?
Second.
Second Supervisor Banks, discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, guys.
All right. Next item is Parkway East. This is from the Madison city limits to the Glucksat city limits. Budget on this project is $1,053,636.36.
Tim, why don't we save some time, we're out of money.
We out of state aid money. This can also go on the unfunded road plan if it's not already there. If Supervisor wants to put it there, he can. And when we get to that, then we'll look at it and move forward from there.
Okay, so you'd like to pull items 73 and 74?
74.
Okay.
Not 74.
Not 74?
74 is Yandell Road.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, item 74 is the bridge.
Okay, all right. Right, okay. All right, item 74. This past Friday, we awarded, or we received bids for the Yandell Road Bridge Project. These are the two bridges on Yandell right there near Hampton Hills. We received four bids for these. The parent, or the low bidder on this was BP Construction with a bid of $1,025,570.65. The engineering department recommends awarding these, this bid to BP Construction.
Is that one, is that one bridge?
That's two bridges.
Two bridges, okay.
Move.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks, second Supervisor Griffin, discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
That's all I have.
Before you leave, I think we were talking about doing a bridge on South Spring Road.
Yes, sir.
Right by the middle school there.
Yes, sir.
Are we still moving forward on that?
We are.
If you will, shoot for trying to get that big bridge done in the summertime because there is a main artery going to that school for children and buses to get there.
And that brings back to these two bridges that we just bid. Part of the reason they're so high is that we've got a short timeline on them because we are trying to do them in between school letting out and school letting back in.
Tim, also, with that being said, you know, give us an update list on the bridges that, you know, that state aid is looking for us to repair.
Okay.
You know, just, just shoot us all an email on, on where we are and, you know, which ones we have in progress and which ones needs to be funded, money put towards them.
Okay, will do.
Okay.
Mr. President, before you move along, could you, could y'all clarify your actions on, on Agenda's numbers 72 and 73?
We did not take them up.
Did not?
No, sir. All right, we got a motion on 74, item 74. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
I'll make a motion for page 72, that, that butts into, Tim, that Parkway East going to butt in the reunion too, isn't it?
It will.
How's the condition in your opinion?
Well, it, it will need to be done at some point. I would think that we would get reunion two and three done and then go back and evaluate it at that point.
Okay, I'll make a motion to put it on the state aid list.
Put it on the state aid list for?
For funding. Wait, Brad, is Brad in here?
Right outside.
What's the process to getting that? What's the process to getting that added to the state aid list? Reed Park, come up here real quick. It's federal, it's federal aid?
Currently, it's on the federal aid list, it's not, not on the state aid list. We'll have to go through the process of showing that it meets the standards as far as road widths and drainage and stuff like that for state aid. It's not a, it's not a long process.
Is there any type of estimation of how much traffic this road will be handling when reunion two and reunion three are completed?
Once they're open, I don't, I can get you those numbers, I don't have that number right now.
Brad, do we have any of the federal funding money? I knew, I know the county used to get some.
But it's usually the STP funds that we get for those, which is for, like what we're using for reunion.
Yeah, because I, I, used to, they had them separated.
Yes, sir.
For some reason or another, I'm not, never understood that.
You say that federal money, we, STP, reunion, federal reunion?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're using for reunion phase two and three, and that, that's the LPA-type M dot money is STP project.
Yeah.
We're portions of it anyway.
What's the process to getting that road switched to state aid from federal aid?
To get the parkways put on the state aid road system? We just have to go through the process of requesting it from state aid and showing them that it meets the, it meets their standards as far as drainage and road widths and structural thicknesses and stuff like that. It's not a lengthy process, we can do that.
Okay, you need a motion?
Sure.
Would you think that will be a wise decision for us to do since we got these big projects coming?
As far as putting it on the state aid list, I, I mean, I, I think anything on the state aid list is good for when funds are available to use. You have more options on the table.
You're going to have more options with, with local money than your state aid money, since it comes around once every four years.
When it's on the state aid list, we can still use local money to fix it, right?
Oh, yeah.
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
All right, clarify your motion.
Yeah, what is the motion?
For Brad to follow the process to switching it to a state aid road.
All right. Got a motion Supervisor Baxter, do I have a second? Second. Second for discussion. Also, give us a list of the state aid roads as well, if you will, just send out a list. Because as we just went through the list, there's, there's not enough of money to take care of the state aid roads that we currently have. And here we are wanting to put another one on the list, you know, as well. So, you know, with that being said, I'm not sure it makes a whole lot of sense to put another one on the list. You know, instead of just using local funds. But anyway, we have a motion on the table, have a second, all in favor? Say aye. All opposed? Thank you, Brad.
Yes, sir. Tim, could you repeat the amount? I've got a million fif, a million 53,000, that's on item 72. I couldn't write it down fast enough.
72, which road was that?
Parkway East.
Parkway East.
Yeah, I think you, you pulled that one.
No, we pulled 73 was Rice Road.
I pulled two of them.
We pulled both of them, 72, 73. Hi, Mr. Weeks?
Morning, Board of Supervisors.
Yes, sir.
Uh, first item I have is acknowledge the planning zoning draft amendments from January 11.
Do I have a motion to acknowledge?
Move.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks, I'll second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? Item 76?
Stokes Road Shell, this is a site plan, an appeal was filed, and if y'all could set the hearing date for March 18th, 2024.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Move.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks, do I have a second? I'll second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed?
That's all I have.
Yeah, we're already taking up 77. Mike? Okay, Greg?
Morning, Board, I have three things for you today. Item 78 is a request to acknowledge a resignation from the Mackwell Board. Mr. Keith O'Keefe has resigned.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks, I'll second, and, and I would like to say and, and just recognize Keith, the job he's done over the past eight years. He's helped out tremendously to help move our board forward. He's helped out tremendously to help move that board forward and appreciate his service to that board, but also to the county as well. All right, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all oppose.
All right, and, and just one note in relation to that. MACWA has requested a replacement be appointed as soon as possible. Obviously, y'all can take your time and do what you want there, but MACWA has requested a, a replacement be named soon.
I'd make a motion to replace Keith O'Keefe with Tim Bryan.
Thank you.
Got a second Supervisor Griffin, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose.
All right, that solves that one. Item Seventy-nine is a, I'm requesting this board approve a people's construction pay application for the fridge utility center across the street. They just got in a little late, didn't make claims docket, but I'd like to pay them because they are working hard. They're actually ahead of schedule, which is not something construction projects and government generally get to say.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
Most must vote to accept it. We, we were contacted by a gentleman who wished to donate up to a hundred and fifty oak trees. He had some cypresses as well. We, we passed on the cypresses, but, but the oaks are in good condition. They're about eight feet tall, two, eight, between eight and fourteen feet tall, two inches thick in the trunk. He has also donated some to the City of Madison, City of Byram. He's getting out of the, the nursery business and is just trying to get rid of his, his, his crop or his, whatever you would call plants. So, he would like to give us some. We, we can find a use for them. So, if, if it pleases this board, I would suggest that, that this board vote to accept that donation and authorize the comp trailer to issue tax documents related to said donation.
Move.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks, do I have a second?
I, I haven't, I'm, sorry, there was a question. I have inspected the trees. I've got a picture of me standing next to them if you really want to see it. Yes, I have seen them. They are in good shape. They're vertical.
Take your words for it. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Second Supervisor Griffin, and do, and we do have a place that we can, we can plant them?
I, I do believe so, yes, sir.
Good deal. All right, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, all oppose.
Thank you very much.
You have a hundred and fifty oak trees. All right, now, son, come troller.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Item number eighty-one is approval of the budget amendments and the interfund cash transfers.
I'll make a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Supervisor Banks, discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye, all oppose.
Items eighty-two through eighty-four is the general claims docket and two payroll dockets.
All right, do I have a motion for approval?
Move.
Motion Supervisor Banks, I'll second, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, all oppose. Supervisor Banks, would you take Item eighty-five, please? Okay.
Okay, and the last item is number eighty-five, which is approval of the fleet core claim docket.
Can we get a motion?
Got a motion.
Is there a second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Banks.
Nothing, Mr. President.
Andy, all right. Sheriff?
Yes, sir, I have the inmate meal log for the month of January. If you could acknowledge that for a few minutes, please. I'll provide a copy to your clerk.
Have a motion to acknowledge?
Thank you.
Got a motion Supervisor Banks, Second Supervisor Griffin, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose.
I believe you indicated to Chief Williams I was out the last regularly scheduled board meeting that you would like an update on the camera system. I'd be glad to do that if y'all would like to hear that.
Yes, sir.
All of the sixty body-worn cameras have been issued and are currently in use. All of the vehicle cameras are in use. Odom Rolla's done a good job through Jackson Communication of installing those for us. We have our base station there at the Sheriff's Department with an improved server. And the upgrade that you just approved with the radio and communications department will allow us for, to have on-screen visual tracking of each vehicle. If you'll recall, you approved the tracking part last year, and we can pull that up through an, through an app now, but this will allow for on-screen visual tracking to allow us to be able to dispatch the most, their closest unit for better service, cuts down on time response. So, all of that is fully operational and functional. We have been able to dispel complaints, just, it's amazing.
Yeah.
You know, I never was a camera person, but when, when you can, when, when you do the right thing, you can show that you do the right thing. It cuts down on, on time and, and lawsuits and everything else when all you got to do is stay here, watch it yourself.
That's right.
It's been a great tool. It's been effective community outreach tool for us, so we're very pleased and we thank you all for providing those tools for us.
So, they're all in operation then?
Every one of them.
That's great. Good deal. Appreciate the update as well.
Very much, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. You bet.
Yeah, we just thank you for taking the lead on whatever advice we can to, to keep the identity safe and the public safe out there on the street. Thank you.
Y'all give us what we need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Old business.
I have some old business. So, our last meeting, we made a motion to send a vote back to our historic overlay district, and you gave them two weeks, yet their vote, I know they had a vote because I was there, but their vote is not on the agenda today. I would, A, like to know why and why there's not anybody here to give their vote, and also to, I guess, since nobody bothered to follow up with your motion, to say that after about an hour and a half of deliberation and back and forth, the board voted, out of seven people, there were six votes no, one vote present in that discussion. But I'd still like to know why they were not given that opportunity here today to voice their decision.
Of course, you can always have the opportunity to come. Mr. Clark?
Yes, I can probably take that. Casey, you're right, I was there at that meeting too, but we generally get a written recommendation from the MLHPD prior to moving forward. We haven't gotten that yet and certainly want them to, you know, have full time to fully address their vote and their reasons for the same, so that's why it's not on there today.
That makes sense.
And I know this Phyllis also called me, I don't know, one day this past week and just gave me an update, and she said that the minutes would not be ready for the day.
Right.
And so, she just asked you more time, so.
That's fine, I just was, I was concerned that it's two weeks.
Just hold tight. And, and so, with that being said, it'll probably go back to the planning and zoning board anyway to, for, for them to revisit and look before come to the board.
Okay.
So, all right, any other old business?
Yeah, Kenia. Can, you go down on Yandell Road, get your guy, go down on Yandell Road, start from Gustat, City Limit, come to a probably north Oak Canton Road here, and see if you can pick up some of that litter. That, I use it for a stretch paper, but it'll make out what you need there.
Any new business?
I would like an update on re-advertising Bozeman Road. I think we declined that, what, three, four months ago?
We did, and I know there's some work, and I, I know I've been talking with some of the legislators and, and trying to figure out where the money's gonna come from, where it's going. We don't know yet. We gotta wait on the, actually, the state and see what they gonna do to help us move forward, so.
So, we're not re-advertising because we can't afford it or we're not re-advertising because we don't think that there is gonna be a bid that we can't afford based on our, based on our estimates of how much this should cost?
You know, we, the county has about twenty-five million dollars in skin in the game on reunion, on reunion crossing and reunion threes, we call it, from Parkway East to Highway Fifty-One. Bozeman Road, when it was presented to us back in, I don't know, twenty-fourteen, the dollar amount wasn't correct, even close being correct. And when we accepted the CMPDD bid of four-point-four, not bid, but for the bike trail, basically, you know, put a bike trail and they gave us four-point-four million dollars. Bozeman Road now is coming in, if you go from Glutstat to four-sixty-three, it's coming in around five, fifty-five million, sixty billion dollars. And the county just can't put all of that money, can't put all the skin in the game, and so, we'll probably, probably, depends on what this board wants to do, come back and start, chop it up in phases and try to do, work it that way. And we'll probably start at the intersection of Glutstat and Bozeman, just do that first part. And Tim will probably be willing or ready to speak on it sometime, maybe at the next board meeting, and see what we need to do to kind of get it started. But right now, fifty-five, sixty million dollars, the county just can't afford to put that much money in it.
Wait a second.
Even though we do have some help from the state, but we still have a lot of money that.
Tim, where's Tim?
Can't afford to.
We, we plan to do four-sixty-three to reunion Parkway, and it's not sixty-five million dollars, it was thirty-two million dollars.
The whole road, the whole Bozeman?
We never planned on doing it. Tim, come up here. See all this shenanigan stuff? We've, the whole, the whole time we've been working on this, the widening phase, the dividing median, the lighting, the bike, well, I know the bike path's gonna go the whole way, but we've been planning on doing the four-sixty-three to reunion Parkway was the initial phase of this, correct?
That was Phase One, yes, sir.
Yeah, and that was thirty-two million dollars.
It came in at thirty-seven, I believe.
Okay, well, the whole road, sixty-six million, we were just doing some slight improvements from reunion Parkway to Glutstat Road.
As part of Phase One.
Go ahead and explain all of it.
Okay. Phase One of the project was road widening from four-sixty-three up to reunion Parkway with a bike trail going from four-sixty-three to Glutstat Road. And then, north of reunion Parkway, there was intersection improvements at Glutstat Road. And then Phase Two, which is under design right now, took the, the road widening from reunion Parkway and tied it into those intersection improvements that we were doing at Glutstat Road as part of Phase One, so that was Phase Two of the project. What Gerald was talking about is that whole road widening project, which was Phase One and Phase Two, came in around sixty million.
Yeah, but.
So, I, so the bid that was rejected in September was for thirty-two million or sixty-six million?
It was thirty, I believe it was thirty-seven point seven million.
Okay, but that was the Phase One?
Phase One, correct.
All right. So, we hadn't even put out a bid for the Phase Two, so we can't say sixty-some-odd million, we can say thirty-some-odd million.
Fake news. Right, for, based on the numbers that came in for Phase One, using that for what Phase Two would cost, we're estimating that the total project would cost around sixty million.
So, the reason we haven't rebid this, we rejected it in September, right?
Correct.
And the reason was because the two bids we got were over.
We got one bid.
One, one bid we got was over what we and a third-party engineering had quoted us, right? They said, hey, this is how much it's gonna cost. You, I assume, it's been a few months, said, hey, this is how much it should cost, and we rejected it based on that.
It came in about thirty percent over what we estimated it was going to cost.
Okay, so, is there, has, I know, nothing gets cheaper these days, but I did hear that asphalt is a little cheaper right now. Is it very possible that we could get a bid closer to what we expected it to be if we re-advertized?
It would hard, it would be hard to say that, I believe we were about ten to fifteen million dollars over what we had in the coffers to build the project. And so, it was my understanding that the board was going back and we were, you guys were determining how that ten to fifteen million dollars was going to be funded. And at your all's level, that had not been determined.
All right, so we, so when we advertised the first time and we expected it to come in thirty-two million dollars, did we have thirty-two million dollars?
We, I'm told that that had been covered, that that was available.
Okay.
In some form or fashion.
All right. Well, since it doesn't seem to be going anywhere.
And I'm not sure it was thirty-two million. I think it was less than that.
Yeah, so.
It was around thirty.
Right.
Okay, so, like I said, it was, it was a few months ago, so my numbers aren't exactly right.
Understood. And I'm spitballing here as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I'm not holding anybody anything. So, the money's been allocated up to, we'll just say, around thirty million dollars. Would, I, this needs to be done. This needs to be widened. I'd like to put in a motion for, to re-advertise the bid that was rejected for this Bozeman Road Phase One. See if we can get somebody a little more reasonable and then figure out where to get the money from. If there is a bid that is more favorable to us. I don't think things are getting cheaper.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion on the table? Andy, did you get that motion?
Yes, sir. Re-advertise Bozeman Road Phase One.
I'm gonna make a substitute motion, Tim, for you to come back at the next board meeting.
Okay.
And, and give the board a complete update and move forward with the money, because it was, we were expecting to come around thirty million, maybe thirty-one. And a lot of, some of that was county's money as well. It wasn't all state money or federal money. The county was gonna put in some money as well, and when you add another six, seven, eight thou, eight million dollars on that, you know, it was a lot, so, but if you will, let's make preparations, come back next board meeting. That's, that's my motion to give an update. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Second Supervisor Griffin, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. And then, that way, we can all get on the same level and, and with the understanding and move forward together, every, every which way we decide to go with it.
We can, we can move forward with bidding and still bring that information back next meeting.
Guys, we need to know where our money is. Y'all don't even know where the money is. I mean, y'all sitting over here guessing where the money is. If y'all really interested in the project, you'll know where the money is instead of.
The bidder that got rejected.
It would be nice if you would vote with the Republicans. Vote with the Republicans, Gerald Iran as a Republican.
I, I'm not gonna go.
Boy, y'all make a lot.
Here's the thing, we had one bidder.
We did.
Maybe they overestimated how much profit they were willing to make. It's been four months. They might be able to get cheaper materials, and they might just say, hey, we'd much rather make one million dollars instead of seven million dollars. I mean, I don't understand why it, what it hurts to re-advertise.
We need to know where our money is before we do anything on Bozeman and make, make a good, solid decision to move forward, ever what that looks like on Bozeman. And I'm sure these companies gonna come in and say, hey, I miscalculated. I, I didn't mean to make that much money. I miscalculated. I'm sure they gonna come back and say that.
Well, times are a little tough. I mean, we're under the Biden administration and inflation is through the roof and groceries cost a lot of money. is through the roof and groceries cost a lot of money, maybe they got some bills to pay and they're willing to take.
Yeah, that con- that contractor just got a big contract with, I think, Matita as well, uh, so, I'm sure he's gonna have his hands full, but anyway, anything else?
Yeah, got, got another old business.
Old business, I thought we passed old business.
Were we at new business?
No.
Or whatever business it was.
Yeah, we're about ready to adjourn.
It, it's, it's fuck hard anyway. And it's on the phase two broadband.
Yes.
Is there anything that we need to do to get, uh, an engineer or come cat moving on phase two, Mr. Banks?
Greg?
I think I may can answer that one, I spoke with Darian Warren of Wagner Engineering yesterday. He is awaiting a task order, uh, to kinda resume work on phase two. He was sick last week and was unable to prepare that task order, uh, he does anticipate having it at our next board meeting, at which point I will present it to you all for approval, uh, and that will give them the go-ahead to start working, or continue work on phase two of broadband, so, so next meeting, you should, that's when the stuff from the engineer's gonna be here, per the engineer.
Okay, and, and I would like to kinda answer supervisor Baxter's ridiculous statement as far as Republican, Democrat, and I've said this from the very beginning. From the very beginning, is when a project comes in front of me, I don't look at Republican, Democrat.
I know that.
I don't look at, I don't look at black or white, I don't look at male, female, guys, I just look at the project, and I move forward with my vote, and that's what's wrong with the county, with the country nowadays, and apparently with the county, at this point is, is because instead of looking at everything, everybody looks at left or right, and I'm gonna be quite frank with you, I don't look at it that way, never have looked at it that way, I'm not gonna start today, and, and won't change tomorrow, so, that's just where I stand on these issues, and, uh, that's where I'll continue to be. Alright, do we have a motion to adjourn, uh, to the nineteenth of February?
Motion.
Got a motion, Fin, say somebody wanted to stay here. Do I have a second? Have a, is it twentieth?
Twentieth, yes.
Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn to the twentieth? Supervisor Griffin, you gonna adjourn, make that motion?
I make that motion.
I'll second, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all oppose. Hey, we get, we do, uh, we do have a picture time, and we're going to this courthouse.
Now, tell me, it doesn't matter to me.
Which one y'all want, which one y'all want to go to?
The one they raised?
Yeah.
Don't matter to me, the one they raised.